Good evening. I call the May 7, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve the May 7, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Agenda.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Washington to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion?
It's correct. Isn't it? Oh, you know what? I vote yes. Maybe I haven't joined the meeting.
The vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion carries. I would like to mention for the public that Mrs. Nash is not here at the moment. We will now move on to item 3.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, apparent grievance, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Agostini, to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct on the screen? All right, Board Members, please vote.
Mr. Chair, I vote on the affirmative. Mine is not. My screen is not up. Thank you.
The vote is six yes, zero no, one not present. The motion passes. We will now, we will now enter Executive Session. May I have a motion to end the executive session?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington.
I move that we adjourn executive session at 6:12 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was it Mrs. Agostini? Okay. All right, motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion to resume executive session or resume public session? I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Okay, all right.
The second was by Mrs. Agostini.
Sorry, guys. Let me just start that over. Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Agostini, to end executive session at 6:12 and resume public session. Is there any discussion? Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Dr. Elkin Scott will introduce tonight's guest.
Good evening, everyone. As I look around, I was looking for my motivational speaker tonight, and she's not here. So apparently, maybe she's stuck in traffic, or she has actually forgotten. But I see Pastor Chris Levy Johnson here, and he's never lost the words. So you know what? God is so good. Won't He do it? Pastor Johnson, your inspirational moment this evening, so if you can come on up and give us some words, hallelujah, amen. Won't God do it?
Normally, I charge, but I do believe in the First Amendment, so I will give you a free speech. Let me thank each one of you for your service to our community. I thank each one of you who are really, really, really concerned and care for our children. This is a wonderful district, a wonderful district that both of my children attend. And before my wife started her PhD program where my wife taught at long leave, we are heavily invested in this community and in our children. I was going to talk later about some decisions that have been made and touch your heart a little bit about what happened in our budget and how we can assist our children to live out their God-given destiny. And I know we all have differences. I know we don't agree on everything, but I do know everyone has a heart for our children. And I thank each one of you who sincerely have a heart for our children, have a heart for all. I was telling Sister Williams, y'all got a lot to staff. There's a lot of people work here, amen? And so you have a commitment to make sure that our children have all the resources they need, again, to live out their God-given destiny. We're in some difficult days. We have some difficult challenges ahead of us, and you all have the difficult decisions to make. The most important decisions that you make have to deal with resources, how our district resources are allocated to make sure that each child has what they need to, again, live out their God-given destiny, so they have a wonderful place to learn, that they have a safe place to learn. And we don't always agree on everything, but I pray that we come together as like-minded individuals who have our children's hearts and their futures first and foremost in our minds. So I thank you, Dr. Scott, for this opportunity, just to come before you, to make sure when you make all of your decisions, all right, especially for those of you who are connected like we are connected, that they've made on behalf of the children of this community. I also want to take this opportunity to thank each one of you who are district employees, to our fine superintendent who's not here tonight, but to Dr. Franklin who is sitting in the gap, for all of you who, because I don't think you get paid a whole lot to do this, amen? All right, I come from a fourth generation of teachers. My great-grandfather was the, what they call the colored school teacher of Lancaster County in 1908. Fourth generations of teachers, so I have teaching in my heart, teaching in my blood, and know that I support, even though when we don't disagree with everything, that I have those persons who teach our children first and foremost in our hearts and minds. So thank you for this moment, to motivate you all to take what we say in the church. Can I talk about the church in a public school, but what we say, to keep fighting the good fight of faith and do not get weary in well-doing. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever-beyond.
Well, there she is. She just showed up. So, just a point, if we could allow her to do that, and you know what? God move in mysterious ways, so maybe that's the way it was supposed to happen, but we do have our motivational speaker here. So I'm going to just share the information. As we know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we have a community icon here inspiring survivors to rediscover the me she strives to be. Dr. Juanita Britt McDonald is a comprehensive victim prevention specialist specializing in traumatic brain responses and intergenerational trauma. She holds a doctorate degree in Christian psychology and minor in human behavior. Dr. McDonald is credentialed as a victim service provider in South Carolina and nationally through national organizations of victim assistance, which is called NOVA, and Partner Inflicted Brain Injury Task Force advisor for pink concussion, certified as a mental health first aid, suicide prevention girl circle facilitator, and train the trainer. Dr. Juanita is the executive director of Rediscover Me Women Initiative, whose mission is to engage, educate, and improve the quality of life of survivors impacted by abuse, trauma, and mental health. She's also the author of the Mental Safety Plan Journal, Rediscover Me Training Pathways, and creator of the Trigger Cloud. Through Rediscover Me, Dr. Juanita works with a vast array of individuals, groups, community leaders, businesses, and advocates locally and nationally. Therefore, her personal mission is to be the best transformational servant leader possible. And when she's not developing training programs, counseling, or supporting her community, you can find Dr. Juanita laughing and loving on her family. She's the mother of five amazing sweet peas, as I call them, four daughters and one son, ten grandchildren, and twin niece and nephews that keep the entertainment going. I welcome Dr. Juanita Britt McDonald. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. And please forgive my tardiness, because I'm not used to the traffic on this side of town. But today, I would like to just address everyone as a mental health specialist, just to share a little bit of tidbits of information. This is Brittany. I'd like to introduce you to Brittany. Brittany and I actually go around and we support individuals by helping them to begin to understand basically what happens with their mental health. And so today, as I share briefly, our, as you know, May is, as we just heard, Mental Health Awareness Month. And so there are thousands of Americans who are suffering from mental health. And so I personally, as with Brittany, would like to just share some tidbits of information. First of all, the primary aim of it today is to help you to understand, because of the great work that you do, our mental health needs to be a primary of importance. And so three areas that I would like to share of simple activities that you can do as you go along this journey of supporting yourself as you support our community. Number one, first of all, our brain is made up of 70% oxygen. The more oxygen that you, I can get into our brain, the more clarity that we will have. So how do we do that? We do that by one, exercise. The more that you can get out, just simple walking, will do several different things for your body as well as for your mind. The biggest thing is getting as much oxygen as possible into the brain. Number two, the other thing that we need to focus on is our rest. You have a very big job, and you do quite a lot of work for our community. So what better way to do that than to make certain that you are getting the proper rest that you need, not just sleeping, but getting into that third stage of sleep. In that third state of, stage of sleep is where we get to, our body heals itself, where we actually go in and improve our immune system, and it also helps you and I to be able to wake up the next day with vitality and energy to tackle all the things that we have to face each and every day. Third and final, the other thing that we want to do is to make certain that there, that you are using tools that can help you. One of the key tools that I encourage everyone that I get to work with to download on their app, from the app rather, on their phone, is the CBT-I. That is cognitive behavior therapy. That is a free resource designed by the Department of Veterans Affairs. Ten minutes at night, ten minutes in the morning, just taking that little unique tool and doing some deep breathing helps you to get your day started. And so in my closing, one of the things that I want to also leave with you is this word called saw ubona. Saw ubona is an African Zulu word that means "I see you." I see your dignity. I see your respect, and I see your humanity. Not only do I see all of those things inside of you, but I see the need that we have, we all have, in taking care of our mental health. And so thank you for giving Brittany and I an opportunity to share that tidbits of information with you, as well as for giving us for our tardiness. Have an amazing evening, everyone.[1010.54][1010.54](Applause).
Thank you for that. We will now move on to item 5.1, the consent agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Porter.
I move to approve the consent agenda for the May 7, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Mrs. McFadden, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Ms. Porter, is that correct? Vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move on to public participation. Three individuals have signed up to address the board. You'll be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive or vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. Our first speaker this evening will be Melissa Disinger.
Hello, I'm Melissa Disinger. I've been a teacher for over 22 years at the middle, high, and college level. For the past 16 years, I have worked in Richland 2, where I was selected by my peers as Teacher of the Year at Lythwin Middle and Spring Valley High. I am National Board certified, scored in the top 15% of teachers nationwide on the Praxis Test, and for the past two years, I have taken on teaching an AP-level course where 100% of my freshman students pass their AP exam under my guidance. On April 25, teacher contracts were handed out with a signature deadline of May 11. In anticipation of this, I emailed questions about next year's working conditions to the appropriate district personnel on December 12, 20, March 18, and April 30. I finally received a response to some of these questions today. We are five days away from the deadline to sign contracts, and I would like to know my working conditions for next year before being locked into a contract. As we all know, teachers who quit before the end of the school year have their teaching licenses revoked by the district. I am lucky that I have a wonderful administration at Spring Valley who supports their teachers. However, my administration follows the district and policies set forth by the districts. This means that the district determines my working conditions. Here are a few of my questions. Will we continue to have a grading floor where we give student grades they do not earn? This is especially concerning as middle school students automatically get a 50, whether or not they did any assignments, and can do recovery hours on the computer to pass a class. As a high school teacher, students cannot pass my class without basic skills and knowledge that they should have learned in elementary and middle school. As a result, high school scores are dropping. Discipline, will they re-change to the discipline matrix to enable students who want the opportunity to learn to do so? Imagine if your child was coming to school ready to learn while another child in their classes spewed profanity and hit the teacher or your child, but was allowed to stay in class with your own child. How would you feel? Do you think this is fair and equitable? The current discipline matrix has low to no accountability for student actions, which means disruptive students are allowed to remain in class, affecting the education of the other 31 students in that class. Third, will we continue to have content recovery where teachers are expected to spend hours of additional time outside of preparing lessons and grading to make a new version of every major assignment or test, tutor students for a full hour, and then grade the new assignment? Four, will teachers still be expected to clean their own rooms as we have been doing since 2020, or will the company contracted to clean our schools be held accountable? And finally, if changes to teacher expectations, duties, or jobs are made after we sign our contracts, and the teacher does not agree to work under those conditions, will the district revoke licenses even though the district changed expectations after contracts were given? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Chris Levy Johnson.
Again, I'm Chris Levy Johnson. I come now before you again as a parent of two kids in our district. Also, I come before you as a business owner, as a taxpayer. But more importantly, I come to you today as a pastor of a local congregation. And this congregation has given over $65,000 to start meal programs, to start food pantries to help with student debt relief. We also give probably about $10,000 worth of scholarship to District 2 students every year. We're fully invested in the success of our children here in District 2. So I was a little bothered, a little bothered, almost to the point of being appalled by last week's budget meeting and the fact that many thought it not necessary to have a millage increase to help our students, help our classified employees. I was really, 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 really bothered by reason for that and putting businesses first and the ideas of business. And this comes from a person who owns a business. We've been blessed to be in business for 91 years, and I certainly understand expenses, certainly understand overhead and wanting to reduce overhead and all that matters. But I also believe that it's necessary that we put the needs of our children first, the needs of our classified employees. If I heard correctly, some of them only make $16,000 to $19,000 a year, that they have to work two and three jobs just to make ends meet. And I want to thank you, as I heard, that some of you are working on a compromise to help get those salaries to be increased, on this salary increase study, to make sure that these people have a livable wage, so they're not quitting, they're not leaving, so they're doing the best. As you just heard this teacher say, that we have custodians who will come and work for us, so that these teachers don't have to do all the cleaning up of their classrooms together. We have not had, I don't believe, a millage increase in our school district in five years. So the community has not been taxed or overly taxed, all right? We can handle it if it is something that we need to make sure that our children have all the resources they need to learn. I heard it say that we need to make sure that the businesses have their profits first. What profit of man to gain the whole world but to lose his soul? Why would we have to wait for businesses to profit first when we can pour all this money into our children, into the resources they need, into the priorities that the district has, into the priorities that each one of you have for our students, to make something happen for them? So I hope that there is a way. I don't know if you can change that vote now. I don't know if we can go back now, but at least come together and talk, at least come together and compromise. So again, we provide all of our children, especially our classified workers, who are not living with a minimal wage of life and having to work so hard to make ends meet, that they have what they need to, again, as well, live out their God-given destiny. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker will be Brian Rosefield.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here to advocate on behalf of our athletics throughout our district and specifically high schools to remove the teaching load from our athletic trainers, increase the number of coaching stipends, as well as increase the amount of those stipends. The past several months has been, they've been amazing. We've had meetings with district staff, human resources, finance, the office of the superintendent. This has been a collaborative effort to come together, the proposal to increase those stipends, to increase the amount of stipends, and to be able to remove the teaching load from our athletic trainers. It's been an incredible process, and I look forward to being able to keep pushing this message out. In terms of our athletic trainer, athletic training here in this district, it really does need to change. Athletic trainers are expected to teach at least a half of a day and then expected to stay for games, for practices. And one example that I use is a Monday night sub varsity basketball game where the teacher, the athletic trainer in this case, will come in at 8:00 in the morning, teach a class, teach another class, maybe do lunch duty, maybe do hallway duty after school, and then practices for varsity basketball and wrestling will start at 4:00. Those three games that I mentioned earlier start at 5:30, 5:30, 6:45, and 8:00. So that athletic trainer will arrive at 8:00 in the morning and might not leave until 10:00 PM. Other districts in our area have removed the teaching responsibilities, have increased the pay, and this is, I do not want to sound like a threatening statement here, but we will continue to lose good people if we don't change something. Right now, currently, two of our high schools don't have an athletic trainer, and nobody's applying because of this teaching load and the athletic training that is expected as well. I would also like to advocate on behalf of our coaches and the number of coaches that we need to increase. I'm an old cross-country coach, no jokes. I'm not a runner, never been a runner, but when I was coaching cross-country 18 years ago in this district, I was one man with 55 young men, no assistant coach stipend. I was fortunate enough to be able to find volunteers to come out and help me, but that still is the case within our district for cross-country to not have an assistant coach. Tennis, golf, swim, a lot of those sports don't have assistant coaches, and you look at our sports like football, track and field, that have over 150 student athletes out there. We need more assistant coaches for the safety, the supervision, and the protection of our young men and our young women. And then with those stipends that we do have, the districts that are neighboring us, coaches can leave head coaching, head coaching positions and take assistant coaching positions and make more money. We need to change that as well. Again, we appreciate everything that y'all do as a board, our district. The collaboration has been amazing. We're super fortunate as coaches and athletic administrators to be able to live our dream in coaching young men and what young women. We just want to do our part to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now vote on executive, executive session items. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move to deny the appeal for student number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Agostini, is that correct on the screen?
It is.
Board Members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding student number two?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move to deny the appeal for student number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Agostini?
It is.
The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding the parent grievance?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington.
I move to hear the parent grievance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Washington? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Porter.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second? Motion has been made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any discussion? Is that correct on the screen, Ms. Porter? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We'll now move to unfinished business, action requested. First item in this section is policy BCH, Board Staff Communications. Dr. Franklin.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, Dr. Elkin Scott.
Just on a con, it's policy BHC. Just want to make sure we get that correct.
Okay. I get things backwards, guys. Policy BHC. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this policy was proposed at a previous board meeting. District Administration has no additional information, and we're ready for voting.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. May I please have a motion regarding policy BHC, Board Staff Communications?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Washington.
I move to approve the policy revision for-
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Dr. Elkin Scott. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Washington, is that correct as written? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Next item in this section is a policy revision for policy IKEA, high school credit for- we have an update on that? Okay, same situation. May I please have a motion regarding policy revision of policy IKEA, high school credit for middle school?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move the board approve policy revision IKEA, high school credit for middle school.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. McFadden.
I just wanted to say that I did speak with some Spanish teachers, and they do have concern over this, just because they're afraid of the two hours or the two credits in the middle school and then having to go to high school without that credit. So I just wanted to make a note that I did speak with them, and there is concern from the Spanish-speaking teachers that of the amount of time and squishing all that information into a middle school course.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? From the screen? The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We'll now move on to new business, no action requested. 9.1 is the demography report. The agenda item in this section is a presentation regarding a demography report. Dr. Franklin.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Will Anderson, our chief operations officer, will introduce our guest this evening, who will present to us a demography report for the district.
Good evening. Thank y'all for allowing us to be here today. We've had the opportunity to work with Davis Demographics for over the past year on a demography report, so I'm going to turn it over to Lauren Woods and his team. Before I do that, I want to do a special thank you to Grant Hamilton, who's in the backpack there. Grant is our GIS data analyst who has been working hand-in-hand with these guys with the data crunching and all of the numbers, so this couldn't have been done without Grant. So I just want to thank Grant for that. So I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thank you, Will. Yeah, I appreciate the work. It's nice collaborative work. It's, it makes it a better experience for everybody when all hands are on deck and it's time to put the data together, and that's what we're going to get into right now. The work accomplished spatial data, let's write down Grant's wheelhouse. We're asking, okay, we want to understand where the kids are, geocode them properly, understand the attendance areas, and then once we know that, we can then start researching other things, the other stuff that affects the student forecasting, the resident, the new resident housing that's occurring in the area. You all drive around, you can see that going on. You're windshield demographers, right? Once we have all that information, then we started analyzing other things that are, these are coming from a certain house. We can then overlay kids on top of that house. Helps us understand and create the forecast that we're presenting. This is not a black box. We are going to tell you how to make the cake. It starts with the student population, understanding where the kids are within the district, and then applying birth factors, the preschool and kindergarten grades, to help understand what projected growth can be at the lower levels. Because we, you know, there are little kids that aren't in their system, so there's no way to calculate them. Well, there is. We can look at the birth rates that are occurring in the area to help understand what the growth potentials are. Mobility numbers, mobility factors. Now, we see that it's a term that we call, what you all would say would be cohort analysis. In our case, it's spatial core, looking at the children from year to year and from location to location. These are the calculations to help determine how many kids can be coming from a brand-new house, and then understanding when that phasing, when those houses come online to anticipate, hey, there's 100 homes supposed to come online in two years, and apply that to the forecast. So it's student population, the birth rates, mobility, student generation against your active housing and planned housing. So thinking spatially, first off, it starts with this plain old boring Excel table. Well, it's not boring, it's your student population on a snapshot, state-reported period, and we make sure that we have the correct data. So we go through a data verification process. Once we know where the kids are and it's been verified that we have the correct student file, then we go to geocoding. The center image, these are, this is an image of, just a, it's a, what I call a quick-and-dirty method of just isolating and looking at the ebbs and flows of a neighborhood. And if you see really big dots on the screen but nothing stacked on top, the really big dots were from the 2020 student counts, and the little tiny dots are the most recent. So they're stacked, if you see a bunch of them stacked on top of each other, and, you know, in succession of size, it helps to understand, oh, this neighborhood's an existing, thriving neighborhood. You see other areas where there's big dots, but there's no little dots after that. It's aged out a little bit. So you have neighborhoods that are in growth, you have neighborhoods that are in rather static progression, the other neighborhoods that are starting to age out. And I'll point to other things during this presentation that helps us kind of ID this information. Knowing the attendance areas, working with Grant to make sure we have the attendance areas correct, we break the attendance areas down into smaller planning areas called study areas. Your district currently consists of 725 of these planning study areas. Each one of these has its own projection. Look out from 60,000 feet and say, okay, here it is, and we'll create a percentage of what that is for that one campus. No, we're building up from the neighborhood and applying whatever geography is representative of that neighborhood, what elementary, middle, and high school it is. And then having that ability to do that allows Will and his team for later on to start looking at what-ifs in geography. You know, having that spatial information allows them to start looking at populations and how they, what if we have housing pressures in one area, what does that neighborhood look like if it moves over to another neighborhood, without really taking apart existing areas? They're related, they're the kids that live in that neighborhood, and what does it look like in these, if we need to? Everything's in GIS. So one of my favorite maps to share will, student density map. We kind of have an idea where all the population, traffic gets a little chaotic. Well, you got people that are driving south or southwest to work, or coming back from work, or, you know, heading towards, you head towards Blythewood, you can sure, doing, being here a couple of times, knowing the transportation flows, you don't want to be there in the morning, and you don't want to be there in the afternoon. You all know what I'm talking about. But anything on this map that stands out, you have kids that are living everywhere in the district. It's just IDing and showing the actual intensities of the student population. You have very dense areas right in the central part of the district, and then in that south, that southern southwest peninsula area. We have them geocoded and have all those maps and things. Well, we're kind of bringing things together. This is an open enrollment report. An open enrollment report tells us where kids are enrolled, but also where they live, so we can start seeing the little ebbs and flows within the district and the impacts of how many kids are attending non-traditional campuses, non-bounding schools. And then knowing that, that we can start applying other things, like for instance, school capacity. You know, working with Will's team to get the utilization numbers. These are, you know, these are the utilization numbers at the time of the snapshot, they may have changed since then, but it helps give it another idea of like, okay, if every single kid that lived in Bethel-Hambury went to the campus there, they'd be over 155% capacity. Enrollment of 468 kids from that attendance sum. These are just quick, easy, and I say easy, it's not easy playing together, but quick and easy references when we are just getting going with the data, trying to figure out, do we have outliers? Do we have issues that we need to address? And then move on. Because you can't, if you aren't sure about the data at this point, we need to make sure that it's right. This data's been verified. We also do the same thing with middle school and high school. In the high school, we had, you have those other subsections, those other parts of the district that are the, like Ridgeview, Blythewood High School section. So we, my colleague Cameron Arsenault and John Grau took the time to separate it out so there was actually a number associated without jamming them all into one number. So in like Blythewood Ridgeview High School area, there's 579 students that attended and live in that one community that's sectioned out. We highlighted in the utilization section, and this is high school, so depending on this, on the square footage of the property and how big the acreage is, you can operate at over 100% capacity in high schools because you have large programs, but I thought we'd bring that to your attention, it's over 100%. It all depends on how you're, how are things functioning at that district. You have principals saying, it's fantastic, we have no issues, we have plenty of parking and driveways and screen spaces and stuff, but it allows for Will Anderson's team to go in and look and just draw attention to it. And the best part about this is, we go back to maps. Cameron and John put together a map overlaying that information to help show you all where the utilization pressures are. So if you see something in that, in the elementary map that's over 100, it's going to be red. So it helps kind of point it out a bit better for you. We have the table, it's great, but adding a map to this gives it a little more context. Maps help us ask better questions. And then the middle schools. Now, don't get shocked when you see, I heard the, I heard the, mm. Remember now, elementaries have smaller geographies, so we go back one real quick. Smaller geographies, those are red because that geography just happens to be that size. But we go to the middle schools. Middle schools cover a larger area, so of course that red is going to be a little standout a bit more. I'm sure we could probably work on a different color scheme, but it seems to catch everybody's attention, right? High schools. Nope, no, okay. The high schools, same thing. That's, so keep in mind, these are attendance areas, not study areas, so we're looking at it as a whole. So it just gives, it gives Will's team more information to start making those, helping with discussion points at workshops. Very good. Okay, so first part of this now, we got the kids geocoded, and that was the part, that was the first part, associated with existing information, and now looking at the births in the area. And the district is reflective of the national trend. It has a loss of about 2% in births. That's, national trend's around 3% right now. There's some parts of the country where there's an inward migration greatly influencing this figure, but in your case, there's not enough to offset having this small loss every year. And it's not, this is not an outlier. This is naturally occurring throughout districts throughout the United States. The outliers are the districts that are showing a positive number in births, and that has to do with hyper, hypergrowth districts with 15 to 2,000 new homes being built a year. It's strictly from inward natural movement. Mobility factors. We talked about mobility factors, but remember, these are the comparisons of each one of the attendance areas from year to year for the last four years to tell us what's the, what are the changes that are occurring within that area? Just like when you do, when the finances team here does their cohort analysis, they're looking at the tabular information. We're looking at the kids' physical locations, not, you know, that's Joe Smith, and where's Joe Smith following everybody? Not, you know, that's Joe Smith, and where's Joe Smith following everybody, how many kindergartners were there compared to how many first graders are there in over three-year periods? So when we look at this, they're going to see places that have a positive number, Bethel-Hambury, positive numbers all the way in that elementary to up into upper middle school or into ninth grade. Ninth grade here in the state, you have a retention situation, and also where we call it the surprise ninth grade, where kids suddenly started appearing again that weren't in the program or attending other, other programs that were not D2 districts, District 2 schools. When you look at the high schools, something that I like to share with you all is just make sure, don't look at them individually for the last four years, so eighth to ninth grade, that's what our growth would be, 14% in Bethel-Hambury for ninth grade. It's, so 100 kids were there in eighth grade, so 114 should be there in ninth grade, right? Go ahead and take those, all four of those years, add them together and divide them by four, and see what that number is as average. That gives you kind of an idea if there is retention happening there. Currently, it's reflecting the existing shifts and ebbs and flows that are occurring in your district, and that ninth grade shift has been going on for, for years. We see it, we see a large number that appears in freshman year every, every year, or a larger number. Now, knowing where the kids live and knowing housing types, we then can overlay the children on top of the housing types to give us a ratio of how many kids are coming from a certain type of home. Typically, we want to look at information that's most recent, so the last five years is a great snapshot. You have a great sample of almost 4,000 new single-family detached homes that help us understand that almost, so 55 kids for every 100 homes is coming from brand-new homes. So you see at the bottom there, the, I don't know if I can do the pointer, but the bottom table where it says, "Single Family Detached," go down and follow that factor, and it says 0.543, and that's also called out in the, in the section there. Says for every 100 homes, there's going to be 54 students from recently built style homes. Again, no algebra was involved, no fighting X, it was kids sitting on top of these type of homes, and that's how many the counts are. So no fuzzy math. Now, the fun part is following the development. You all are tracking the development in some levels at the district. We needed to get out, we were here six months ago, seems like yesterday, gentlemen, Cameron and John and I were here and driving development, boots on the ground, and looking at all the sites that are going on. It's fun coming back today and having a little bit of time and them remarking about, oh, wow, that one is really moving along still, or, you know, it's the, coming back after six months, and you all see it, again, dashboard demographers, I mean, you're seeing it happening all the time. Now we have all the information, it allows us to do the forecast. All the fun stuff's done, now it's the boring tables. But boring tables tell us a couple of things. It's telling us the transitions from year to year. You have a small student population that's starting to grow again in the lower grades, okay? It's getting offset by that smaller birth rate, though, so it's not, you're not going to see these tremendous growth spurts, but what you are going to see is this kind of this transition, we'll talk about at the end, is your lower grades are offsetting the upper grades as the upper grades start to decline, because you had a natural bubble that from the, from the, from 2007, we had more of the larger, throughout the country, larger base of student pop, students at that point. And those kids are starting to graduate through, and this is occurring throughout the country. So what's happening is you all are starting to see a, kind of a drop-off in the high school, and it's getting replaced by your lower grades. You saw some areas in your district with positive increases. Let me go back one second, I apologize. This is your resident student population, these are the kids that are enrolled in and are part of that student file. The next one is, this is, the subset up above is the total resident student population. The next one is the unmatched and, non-resident unmatched student pop. And so on this calculation, we went ahead and just let it, let it take on the annual shifts, the ebbs and flows of the existing 10 years above. There are some things, you know, there are some things I wanted to point out, that, you know, you had your high school populate, high school students from outside the area started to decline slightly, not, not big shifts. You went from like almost 400 out-of-district kids to, two years ago, now you're down to 318. Not a big deal, but it's just something just to point out. I thought, you know, in some, some areas, they might be transitioning from open enrollment, maybe you don't have a lot of certified staff that are coming in any longer bringing their kids, but something that was brought up in a, in a session, this could change once vouchers come in. My Ed McMahon back here. Hey, thank you. All these charts are reflecting those tables. You want to look at it this way, stable growth overall within the district, okay? I like to say you don't have to put out fires, you can address the other, you can address the issues of, of supporting your student population, your client, your clientele, making sure that the children are receiving things, you're not having to worry about building things out. You all already doing a great job with capitalized improvements. This, this, this facility itself, I was just awestruck when I walked in. Knowing geography and then knowing that each one of these study areas has its own forecast allows us to start looking at the, the polygons of these areas. In this, in this case, this is the 10-year forecast for all grades, so you can see the little hotspots. You know, we kind of already knew that's where the growth areas are, they follow the development, right? So we go to the next slide. There's the elementary areas, you notice that they're starting to follow kind of a trend in some cases, right? And middle schools. And high schools. And when I say middle schools, I mean grade 6, 8, because we know there's, there's some, you know, we're trying to compartmentalize the grade configurations. And your overall population, you're not seeing any major shifts other than that the lower grades are offsetting the losses in the high schools. So the elementary is basically offsetting the high schools. And there's some, these are just some summaries from the report, but the, you know, you had a gain of 323 kids, this, these are actual numbers, actual numbers. Touched on, you have a decline in your verse, these are things that are in, that are in the charts that we've shared. Mobility factors, there's going to be a report that follows this up with explanations that go further into analysis to help you all work through this. Keynotes, make sure you all are continually tracking the development. These are things that, these are immediate impact items, and keep an eye on how, how the developers are reassessing or trying to get their properties reset. We run into that currently with a couple of districts where, I got an email this morning from a client in California, 500-unit development suddenly went into, to appeal to create smaller footprint homes, went from 60-foot to 40-foot. Well, that's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a big deal, it will, it will cause an extra bus to go into that neighborhood. But those are things, you have Grant here, there's Grant back there, you have Grant, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I have one question. Was administration aware of this, your study and the data, and that there was no growth prior to doing the budget for this year?
We got this report probably a week or two ago, and then was submitted to you guys for today, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Porter.
I'm curious to know if the zoning, the zoning of the schools is affected by the demography report. One thing that's, I'm looking at in particular is how Westwood High School covers so many different zip codes, I'm just curious to know how those lines and borders are created.
Yeah, so, prior to, we're applying information at the, at the set geography, so what are some tangible things that we know? We know certain zip codes are straddle that area. So applying the, a zip code level of birth data is used if it is a large enough sample. So those are those things we can, we can do that specifically represent that area. The other part is on, when you're talking about what specifically is accounting for that neighborhood, your mobility numbers reflect that neighborhood, so all those elementaries that are, are, that are within that high school area, those mobility numbers that are part of that, those neighborhoods are applied, so it's reflecting the actual, the trends that are occurring within the neighborhood.
Sure. Thanks, Lauren, and I think to your direct, maybe your question, yes, attendance lines, I hope this answers it, will have to be addressed at some point. We will have to redraw attendance lines. As you can see in certain areas, it's no secret, we're transparent, people live and buy and grow in certain areas. And so while overall, we're steady, or maybe a little bit of growth, and that's because of the bubble, all the people are going to certain places, and we can't continue to handle that. So we're going to, at some point, as Mr. Dr. Elkin Scott mentioned, last meeting about attendance lines redraw or difficult conversations, and at some point, we are going to have to, to, you know, work together as a team, with our community, get some feedback and make some decisions on attendance lines. But you can see, especially at the high school level, there's some, I remember correctly, that, that we'll need to address at some point. Yes, ma'am. I hope that answers your question.
It does, but also, when they're stretched across so much space, I'm thinking that that would make it difficult to prevent that transient population. So if you're stretched across so many different zip codes, you know, someone can move, I mean, it makes it so that you have more of a transient population when you're across so much space.
Um, yeah, and, and let me, I guess, and then you helped me out here, just because you've done this across the country. So the, the information is, the transient part is, is really about from, from level in school. So I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's not only what school, where I live, but where I went to school as well. So I, yes, it plays an impact, but not as, not as much, I guess, as I, because it's still, that student is still tracking. I don't think I answered that correctly.
And, and, and just to clarify, you're referencing because a little big, there's still the inward transient pop, they're, yeah.
Go from one school to another, back and forth, because you have a narrow line, right?
Yeah, and that's something, that's something, that's a, that's a, that's a policy-driven, you know, do we have, are we offering the same curriculum, why are they transferring? When you work in, I know what you're talking about now, those smaller zones, you can see the lot, because what, what happens? Well, my mom drives right by there.
And, you know, we all know who can explain data the very best out of anybody, so she's already made her way around here, so I'm going to let Dr. Coleman explain this, so she, she can explain it a lot better than I can.
My apologies for sneaking up, Mr. Anderson was not answering my text. So one thing, really clear on, so Lauren is a demographer, right? So when he uses the word movement, and so I just want to make sure that we don't confuse those two different things, now, I don't want to mess up your part, I know my part, but when he's talking about, like, what he showed on that chart was the movement from grade to grade to grade, right? So when we talk about mobility in this district, which is rapidly increasing, it's a little bit different in that it's talking from touch point to touch point to touch point, from school to school to school to school. So they're a little bit different when we're talking about that word, so I just want to make sure that we're really clear on the differences in those two things.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Elkin.
Just for clarification, you stated that we're expected to be a roughly 5% decline in the high school population, can you just provide more information?
You have a natural loss occurring, natural decrease occurring within the high school population.
In general?
In general, yeah, it's, nothing, nothing rapid expansion of, of population in the area, it's just a natural progression with, occurring throughout the US, you have a.
So is that part of like the dropout rates that we're talking about?
No, no.
So, give me a little more.
Sure.
I'm not quite understanding that.
So right now, and he tried, Lauren kind of alluded to it, so we've got a very high, in the mid 2000s, we had a large birth rate, we had a lot of growth, and we've seen that. And so what has occurred is we've got this high, very high enrollment in high school, which is now, when they leave, is getting replaced with a low kindergarten. So as they continue to matriculate here soon, we're going to have lower middle schools get into high school, so that number naturally is going to go down. So that's because of Valley, I have no idea if that's accurate, 500 Spring Valley High School senior class, next year, that's going to be 400, because these smaller classes are matriculating, and it's not being replaced by birth rates, and it's not being replaced by the huge natural growth that we saw in the mid 2000s of the, we were growing by 1,500 students a year. So that huge growth is not being replaced now, like you mentioned. So it's, it's dropout rates and all that are part of it, but it's mostly that we're taking a large number and replacing it with a small number, and, and, and the growth and the birth rates are not keeping up to match, to make it stay at 500. Does that, does that help answer your question?
If I can give you a good example, a concrete one, so we've been working, sorry, we've been working on placement data, that's something that my office does. So we start looking at kids in transitional levels from fifth to sixth grade, looking at test scores, grades, where do we think that they should maybe be placed? So you've been a high school administrator, so I just sent you the data, Ridgeview, here's where I think they might need to go to class. Dr. Elkin Scott, every single high school called me and said, your numbers are wrong. And here's why, because all of a sudden, that big ninth grade that they have this year looks a lot smaller. It's just that there is a smaller current group of eighth graders that's going to become ninth graders next year, but everybody swore the data was wrong, and I get it, because when you have those drops and you go, oh, my goodness, what happened, it's really just that you have a smaller group coming up than was there currently. Thank you for that.
And by the way, you all, it's just something, again, I want to touch on it, everybody's going through this, it's, but in some districts, it's masked by other things, they have hyper, hyperdevelopment, things like that are masking it, things that are being masked, student generation rates are declining, things like that. This can't be masked, this, you all had, was it, was it 21, 21 had this huge freshman class taking the data, so we, everybody went back and looked and said, no, there's 2,800 freshmen in that student file, and there was 24 the year before. Imagine that, imagine me, I'm sitting at my desk, about to fall out of my chair, I thought somebody had, you know, switched the, switched the letters on me, and I'm like, no, numbers are right, these are things that are just occurring, and that large, that large sample is now graduating through, that's that, that's, those kids are now 11th graders, and they're going to be gone in next year, after next year.
And if there's any, I want to make a point, and we'll still answer any questions y'all have, and Lauren kind of alluded to it, one, this is our projections, and we have to stay focused, hyper-focused on the growth. And so we've had multiple meetings, for example, with Scout, and trying to keep a track on that. They have done some work with that, too, so we've got feedback, we've got to stay on that. The second thing is, and you mentioned the voucher thing, if, if we continue to go the route of open enrollment, that's a variable that, that we don't, currently can't really track because we've never had that. And so that's something we also have to, so while this, the key word is, this is a projection, and we're going to continue to work, Grant, myself, and with Davis and others to continue to stay on top of this. Grant, myself and with Davis and others to continue to stay on top of this so that we can make adjustments as needed. But as of this, this snapshot was as of day 45 enrollment, tracking back over the last previous years and on the information we had, the verification and work. And so as y'all know, things continue to change, like where did that come from? And so we know it's gonna change, but we wanted to at least show you where we are today. Because I think some of the, some of the things that even myself, when I first saw this, like, oh, I didn't really realize that is, we see all the growth, we immediately think we are just growing like crazy. But then we see there's neighborhoods that aren't having any growth or we have that big bubble of aging out. So again, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page on that. Any other questions that, that, that any of us, and obviously Dr. Coleman can answer way better than I can, so.
Ms. Porter.
Mr. Chair, so how are we using this information to inform key decisions within the next few years?
So this was our, I know I've been, spoken to you all about capital calls. A building a new school is a lot of money, much money. So it would help us in terms of our capital improvement plan, knowing that we don't necessarily need to start earmarking 50, 60, 100 million dollars for a new school. So that's a big key player now, so that as we continue our cap, from, from operation standpoint, continue our capital improvement planning, then we can then come back with a, with an updated plan. You know, so that's, that's how we will continue to use this, continue to use this data. Not only, and also for, to Ms. Porter's point earlier about attendance lines, you know, it's something we need to do, we need to, we need to look at that. And then we'll continue to use this as we plan for staffing and for others, other situations. So it's, it's data that really helps inform us for what we need to do to be prepared for the future. But primarily in terms of operations, it's really gonna drive our facility plan. Did that help? Okay.
Ms. McFadden, did you have a question?
Not a question, a comment, but about, I wonder how they came up with all this information? And you actually broke it down, so I want to say thank you for all your hard work and time that you guys put into this, because this is very detailed. And like Mr. Anderson said, we could use this for years to come. This is good information.
Absolutely, it's in GIS. And so it's, some of the, most of this data is easily trans, transitioned. I mean, where's Grant, he's back there, Grant's hiding back there. We, it's like speaking Spanish, we speak GIS. Before we leave, guys, I just want to, my colleagues in back, come on, come up here for a second. I just want to thank Jonathan Goral, where's John? John Goral and Cameron Arseno. You know, these are the, these are the gentlemen that are going back and forth, working with Grant, helping Will and I understand what the heck's going on. Are confident what's, what the information is. Now, in knowing some of these questions, if you have more questions, please let Will know so that we can expand on it in the report. Because that's the best part about doing this, is you all saw 40,000 foot view, now we can get down into the, into the weeds a little bit on some other stuff, okay?
I'm just gonna say, those fellows look mighty handsome up there. You guys young, so you'll be around in five years, we'll have more questions for you.
That's right. Yeah, they're, they're, they're just waiting to kick me out.
I was adopted.
Thank you.
If I could ask one question that you can say yes or no and we'll move on. But I'm just curious if we have taken into consideration how many people are doing homeschooling, charter schools and stuff like, is that, is that a factor here?
It's not, okay, so that's a great question. When we, when I use the term mobility, when I use the term mobility, remember I'm looking at the ebbs and flows, I'm looking at just your student population. So if there's a new charter school that's come online the last several years, those students are already in the calculations, in our mobility numbers. If you have a transition of a, maybe the, maybe a more homeschooling, remember in 2020, we saw the, we're, we're called John Walsh, our kids are missing. That's already part of the, part of the system, right? Everybody likes that one, not these guys, they don't know who that is. Just saying. But we can specify some more information that you all have. But when I talk about this with other clients or other districts, there's another step. And it's, it's basically data enriching the attendance areas and the zones with non-District Two data to help start saying, where aren't our kids? That's what, I had a board president one time, where are double negative on me? Where are our kids? I thought, that's really good. But we're able to tell you, okay, just like what I used to do in youth sports, I used to, where aren't we helping in the community? Where can we better represent the community? And that those, that GIS helps us, allows us to start door knocking. Hey, what's going on over here? Maybe you all already know, but we have more context.
So we actually do track homeschool students. If you have a student who is of school age by state law, you are required to allow the district that you live in to know. So that is tracked through the academics department. We report that annually to the state as well. Charters are a little more challenging. If it's a public charter, it's very easy because they have to contact us to get the student's record, right? So if I move my daughter to Porter Charter School, her, her district is then going to ask me for my daughter's records. And we do keep track of how many records requests we get a year. Gets a little harder when it comes to private schools because they won't always ask, but we do keep track of those numbers.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I know a lot of homeschool families, that's why I was curious about that.
Yes.
Are we good? Anybody have any other questions? Okay, thank you, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next, next item in this section is the artificial intelligence report. It is, it'd be presentation by Ms. McFadden. Ms. McFadden, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. So this presentation is gonna be about my trip to New York in the middle of April. It was an AI conference for learning in the brain, just basically talking about Dr. Scott's young lady that she had for inspirational moment. And how the brain works, especially when it comes to the new technology that we have. All right, so an overview is gonna be what is artificial intelligence? The overview, understanding the problem, project objectives, target audience, market trends, the cycle diagram, and then the project overview. So a lot of times when we say artificial intelligence, what the picture that is shown is kind of like what we think of, the robots, all the little doohickeys of, you know, charts and graphs and numbers. So that's actually kind of exactly what it is. But for starters, I'll be focusing on the paradigm shift of education and the workforce as it relates to the AI era. Basically, there is going to be a shift. The jobs that we have today will be fading out, a lot of them are, as we can already see, for new jobs. And it's actually defined as the development of a computer system that is able to perform tasks that normally require human intelligence or the ability of a computer to think and learn. So there were some problems that, that were discussed. First of all, ready or not, AI is here. We see it in all kinds of areas. Most people know what ChatGPT is. I actually got introduced to it by board member, Ms. Angela Nash. She said, you don't know about it, let me tell you. And ever since then, I've been very interested in it. Bionic limbs, 3D printing. I don't understand the concept of 3D printing, but we will learn eventually. The other thing is experts agree that it is uncertain. We do not know if it's gonna be the best of times or the worst of times. And there's actually some movies out that I put up there, some of them I don't recommend for children, but that is the future. Those are some of the topics that are being discussed on podcasts from people who actually created these certain types of robots. So we do need, we owe it to ourselves and our future and our children to make sure that we are aware of the pitfalls that can happen. And then third of all, the restructure of the education and workforce development programs that we should be doing in central and relevant jobs. So as human beings, we are made to progress and be innovative. We have done that since the beginning of times, from cavemen all the way up to today. And as you can see, from steamships to locomotives, the main thing that hasn't changed that much is the horse and buggy. That's been the same horse and buggy before Christ time, so. And I thought it was funny to put up there, but that's the one thing that really hasn't, cars especially, since they first were created, they're changing. Same thing with AI. So the main thing that we need to think about is how are we gonna use AI in such a way that we don't lose our humanity and that what we create doesn't destroy us? And then how to prepare our children for the unknown world of AI? So I was gonna fix this, but I wanted to show how one program that I input this in, this sheet, was completely different. It was two columns, it was lined up so pretty and everything worked wonderful. But when I transitioned it from one type of program to another type of program to upload it to this document, this is what happened. And so it's all over the place. And I wanted to leave it like this to show that sometimes what we put in on one screen and what we think it's gonna be, it comes out to be something totally different. And we have to be careful of that because once the final product is created, you may not be able to go back and change it. So I will say, let me read the fine print at the bottom of all documents, by the way. These numbers and graphs are not for true depiction of actual information, it is just a visual purpose only, okay? So basically what that shows, the first one is retails. In the beginning, everyone could get a job as a cashier at any store, you only had, you didn't even have to have a high school education. And so that was on the incline for, for many, many years. But as you can see, that's taken a drastic turn. Going to any Walmart, there's nothing but chaos. The people are gone, they're not there anymore. Those jobs are fading out and that's one of the, the criteria. Because where those jobs used to be, there's now computers. You do it by yourself. And even you can order online and get your food delivered to you, your groceries to your front door. The second one is computer programmers. Well, it just starts as an upward trend and it's gradually growing. A lot of people don't really understand it, are afraid of it, don't know if they're actually able to, to learn the information that it takes to create these things, coding. It's new. So it is on a steady gradual incline. But there's other jobs that have shot up very quickly and they're gonna continue to grow, to grow. And those are taxis. But we call them lifts and Ubers and UPS trucks and food trucks. They're everywhere now. So when we're talking about Scout coming and switching to electric cars and not having to have gas, as much gas anyway, we're gonna have to fund this. So that means that there's gonna be a transition in the automobile industry, as we can see now in our very own town. That we're gonna have to have other ways to get more power from electric, from electricity. Where are we gonna put that? So those are the things that are gonna be changing. On this one, the realignment of the workforce, it's showing that, the 75% one, again, numbers are not relevant. It's just the graph that I want to show that management and information technology, that's gonna be a big talk chunk of our workforce. Healthcare providers, we'll always have healthcare providers because anything that is going to be providing care for humans, we're gonna need that because humans plan on being around for a while. Another interesting thing that these session speakers were talking about was the need for teachers. And specifically K through two, through three. Because they're the ones, can't really have a robot with a child. Because if we've all seen our robot, the main thing that Will Smith talked about was that it's clocks and lights. Because the robot couldn't tell that he needed to save the child and he saved Will Smith. So a human would know better and that was his biggest concern. And so humans can relate with other humans better and they know you save a child over another person, over a man. That's just human nature, we know that. Robot couldn't. So for teachers, they know that they can teach these children empathy, character development, those types of things. So that, that area of work will be very crucial in the future. And then the other one is your cosmetology, your massage therapist, your sports and coaches. Those are all what we call, or they called safe jobs. Believe it or not, the entertainment business isn't going anywhere. Social media is going to be there. So those are just some of the, the jobs that are quote unquote safe. So the question is, how do we educate our children for an unknown future in artificial intelligence? And this picture shows where this, the old learning environment was teacher led. You have students in the class, much like I'm doing now, students in the class, and the teacher is teaching the, the students. And it's built on a one size fits all model based on the child's age and then their geographic location. However, it is shifting because of, of programs like Google, Google Classroom, Zoom, Skype, Facebook Live, Blackboard, Podcasts and other avenues where students can be in a room on their computer and be taught a class or a course from someplace in Japan, from someplace in Kansas. So the material that they have access to and the ability to be taught by someone else in another location is on the rise. They're not just staying in their same classrooms anymore. And look at how they've changed. Students are now sitting in a circle and they're collaborating. They're getting ideas from each other. Most of the classes now have one-to-one, which is a computer for every single child. That's how we are in this district. And we even have a new cybersecurity showcase at Westwood High School. And I talked to Mr. Jackson and he said, maybe in the next year or so, they're gonna need to get another teacher. Because right now, unless you are zoned for Westwood, you're not getting this information. But there are avenues to where students can attend different classes. If they're at Spring Valley or Bloathwood High, they may be able to get the teaching and information from Westwood High. So one of the greatest examples that we have in this district of a, of a collaboration, teacher guided classroom, is one from our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Will Epps for the bio diesel program that he has at Bloathwood. The brick and mortar educational concept is shifting. The students are not sitting in classes with books, pens and paper anymore. They're getting their hands on the materials, we're getting the materials to them and they're actually doing the work. Now, this is important because even though we have Scout coming with electrical cars, we still have gas vehicles. And producing that is, is a big thing because we're at war a lot of times, going and getting resources from other countries. That's the biggest concern with the world a lot of times, resources in other places. But if we can create our own resources from the materials that we have in our own world, in our own area, that's gonna be very helpful to peace in our whole world. That's my little tidbit on that. But then we, we move on to a young lady that I met at the conference, Ms. Ingrid Grant. Her school district did something amazing. They had a lot of empty malls like what we have. So what they did, they partnered with businesses in their community and they hired their own workers. They had electric, electricians and construction workers that they were training in their school, in their classes. So when the county came and said that they would approve for them to use the malls and revamp the malls, they hired their own students as apprentices and paid them while they're in high school. And it's twofold because the classes that they were building and the partners that were coming in, went adult students that had graduated, that still needed those skills, those soft skills, those hard skills, to actually go work in their, in their community. So you talk about that link that we have between those students that are not ready when they graduate. They found a way to catch those students and still help them, even though they had already graduated. But we still keep contact with them, especially in, if they go to college, whether or not they graduated or not. So the same thing that they do with people who graduate in career ready fields. And this is just some statistics about their school, guys. This school is number six out of 131 in Virginia. And that's where I was interested because we want to be looking at schools that are already there, that are already doing it, that are already surpassed. And number six is really good of 131 schools in their district. So that's where we want to look at and look forward to, to figure out how they're doing it so that we can continue to move forward. And we're actually doing a really, really good job here in District Two, just like Mr. Levy said. This is a good school district and we just keep moving forward because we do have the one-to-one. We're fingertips and we can access anything. So one of the biggest, the students are turning around and using ChatGPT to do their homework. And so there's a lot of plagiarism and rules and guidelines about the integrity of their work. Even though it's easy to do, there are some benefits. For instance, one of the things we talked about was cell phone use in classrooms. Almost every child has a cell phone, along with their Chromebooks. So one of the presentations was a teacher who had students, 30 students, or excuse me, 23 students for 30 minutes. There were 268 distractions in 30 minutes. They weren't text messages from their family and friends. They were notifications from algorithms that they had from their social media sites, places that they had. So one of the things is we had a Teacher of the Year that he was telling us, we've got to do something, there is a problem. And so I put her picture up here because it's important to remember, these are the reason why we have Teachers of the Year. She's no longer Teacher of the Year. She's no longer Teacher of the Year, it's last year, but she's still doing the work. Just because that title fell off, she didn't stop. She kept going and kept advocating for things that are important. It was so important, actually, that we had Mr. Patrick Kelly and Ms. Lisa Ellis also give us information about this, because they're working on it at the State House. If they're working on it at the State House, it's pretty important, because they have issues and concerns that, that they have to take care of, and they're actually making this a priority. So we wanna make sure that we're creating policies that help our teachers to keep these distractions down. Another problem with this is that students are always under peer pressure, in their mind and in their hearts. If they got a notification, they feel like they're gonna miss something. But as this says, we need to create firewalls to help them. If a student watches one thing that's sad or a TikTok video, it goes viral really quick and an algorithm is created. So every time that they get online, that same sadness is, is repeated in a different way. So we all know the saying, and I put that at the bottom, you are what you eat. That's the same thing with these students. If they start looking at something sad and the algorithm is created to continue to show bad things to them or sad things to them, they get into a depressed state. And we need to make sure that we're taking care of our children and making sure that we're doing our job to make sure that we protect them. The same way that we put in metal detectors to protect their body from, from harm, from, from knives and guns and things like that, we need to put in firewalls on our devices to make sure that we're protecting them against pornography, violence, sad things, those kind of things that will help their, that can. And so monitoring and regulating their content is a way that we can help them. And then also teaching them behavioral development. I think it's behavioral development, I can't remember the word that they told us. But just making sure that we're teaching them empathy, that's the number one thing, to understand how children think and to teach them kindness. So what they did was, they did a study that said that the reason why there's a lot of distraction in schools is because you have a child that is learning a subject that doesn't match their personality. So it, we have Myers-Briggs, we have all kinds of different personality tests. So if we begin to allow the teachers to use ChatGTP to create their lessons, that frees up a lot of their time. It frees them up to where what used to take them hours on end to do, they can do in minutes. And they had a presentation that, that showed us how to do that. It was really interesting, because it created an entire lesson plan for the whole, whereas teachers don't have to do that anymore. They actually have time where they can actually speak to the children and get a thought of that child. So for instance, if they, a child takes a Myers-Briggs test and they have a certain personality, and they learn social studies, or they, let's just do the example I had, they learn English better by acting it out, as opposed to reading it. A teacher comes in and the first thing they said, we're reading 10 books. And the child who does not like to read, the first thing they're doing is sitting back, because they've seen the syllabus and they're defeated at day one. But if you get a child who likes to act as they're being taught English, and a teacher who likes to give role play while they're doing English, and you pair them together based on their likes off of a test that they take, you know that these two will be paired appropriately. Then when that student comes in and the syllabus says, we're gonna be acting out these different plays, automatically that syllabus tells that student that they're excited about going to school in that class that year. And the teacher's excited, because she knows that she has students that are willing to do the part. So whatever she says, who wants to do this, instead of having one sheepish, sheepish hand going up, you have five, and she's in the position, well, now she gets to pick, or they get to function better. It also decreases distractions, because when children don't wanna do something, they're over there doing what they do wanna do. And it causes disruptions. And so we can decrease that and increase the productivity of what our children are doing and learning, and actually be put on their pathway to purpose. So this is just something of Bloom's Technology, that I had never seen this before, I'm not a teacher. I know that a lot of times, most teachers probably already know this, but I had never seen, I thought it was interesting, the, how to go about teaching students to learn and to retain that information. And in the upper right-hand corner, those are just the books that I bought, because this is so important, that we know and understand where we're going as a district, where we're going as a society, and how to prepare not just our students here, but students across the world, because they will be interacting with each other as they are now. There's not gonna be the borders and the lines that we see. Those lines are just figment of our imagination. There's, they're not really there. And so, and how we need to train our children in the future, is that they need to learn how to be productive students, productive people in our society. So you train them based on skills that they will need. And especially teaching them to care about each other, because when they care about each other, they start thinking, hmm, how can I solve this problem? What can I do to help these people? And then they go on to create it. And so teachers are leading them to think about a concern. I know at Lonnie B. Nelson, there was a teacher there, she had a program where she started, where the students decided that they were gonna send, I think it was socks to, to veterans. I can't remember, don't quote me on that, it's all running together. But, and they did that, and they decided to create a way to do it. And then they'll scale, but then you can grow, and those types of programs can help more than just your area. They can grow and create jobs for other people in the future. So this is basically the test I was talking about, figuring out what these students wanna do, how they are, how they work, what their minds wanna do. And so the goal is to get a career. And they define career as something that you have high ability to do and a high passion for. Anything that, that you, that you're not good at, but you like doing as a hobby, and anything that you're good at, but you don't have a passion for, is a job. And if there's something that you're not good at and you don't like, don't do it. It's, it's not gonna be good for you. And so this session was about making sure that students are getting to their career, what they like to do and they have the ability to do. And no two students are the same, and they have no two same motivators for their success. And so here in Richland Two, I love this, because it says, "Purpose Driven and Future Ready," for each and every child, according to their own individual path. And we have as a responsibility of the adults to make sure that they're getting on that path. And time is moving on, whether we want to or not. AI is here, it's not going anywhere. And we need to prepare ourselves and our students for that. And I wanna say thank you all for your time. If you have any questions, please send me an email. I don't know that, that we'll have time for it tonight, but, or you can just ask today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden. Board members, are there any questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the next agenda, at the next, for the May 21st.
As a reminder to the public, our second meeting in May will be held on May 21st, which is the third Tuesday in May, as opposed to our regular fourth Tuesday in May, due to commencement exercises scheduled for the fourth Tuesday in May. The board will be called to order at 5:30, followed by the approval of the agenda, and then the board will convene an executive session for the following items, student appeals, student admission requests into the district's Adult Education Program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations and certified releases, contractual matter regarding food service, personnel matter regarding, related to the superintendent's evaluation. And then the board will come back into public session at 6:30 with the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Following that, we will have special recipients, then approval of the consent agenda, which includes five employment releases and in-district transfers. We will then have an opportunity for public participation, followed by voting on executive session items from Section 3 that require action. For unfinished business, no action requested, there'll be a legislative update. That update will be provided by the Richland County Education Association representative, and then a budget update for the 2024, 2025 general fund budget. In the section labeled "New Business, No Action Requested," we will have the third quarter financial report. And then there will be a proposal of two policy revisions, Policy GCC/GDC, Employee Leaves and Absences, and Policy GCD, Administrative Staff Days. There will also be a proposal of a new policy, sick leave meeting, and then we'll have three standing agenda items, if, if they're needed, which are public participation, executive session and voting on executive session items. The meeting will be concluded with board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Thank you, Dr. Franklin. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you'd like to see made to the May 21st, 2024 agenda or to a future agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. McFadden.
I would like to add, Policy BDE, Board Committee.
We're gonna discuss that in workshop in August. Additions or anything to the agenda? All right, we will now move on to Board and Superintendent Comments. We will start off with Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had to find my notes. I wanna thank again the staff that came out to speak tonight. I do really appreciate you all coming out and speaking and sharing, sharing with us your thoughts and actually all those, those that participated. I wanna congratulate our avid early graduates. It was really an honor to watch them graduate at USC Sumter last week. And finally, just wishing all of our teachers a happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you. Ms. McFadden.
Thank you all for a great morning.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you for sharing your concerns. I think it's critical for everybody to know and understand the process, and we are right at the midpoint of the process. And I truly believe that we will be able to take care of all of our needs, as we continue to get updates on our budget from our CFO, our superintendent, the state and the county. But I also believe in collaboration, and it is my hope that in the future, we create tables where we invite all stakeholders to the table, instead of creating division. It is my hope that as a board, we go out to our people, instead of waiting for administration to try to schedule buildings and look at calendars, we can work with our community leaders to ensure that all voices are heard in the process, as our teachers show up and they email us, they share their concerns, and we're very appreciative of that, because everybody is understood without passing judgment. And it also helps us to gain a much better respect for the diversity of thoughts of all of our stakeholders. We, as a board, answer to our community, all of them, our parents, our grandparents, our businesses, our students and organization, and we can do this process much better. I also wanna highlight our teachers' concerns and celebrate our teachers for this week. Working conditions, it has been on the table for discussion for such, for quite some time. A teacher can make great money in their career, but if the working conditions are not favorable for growth, for their voice to be heard, and for sustainable practices like protecting planning periods, removing the initiative overload and resource gaps that are not giving us a return on our investment, and treating them like the professionals they are, then that gives teachers an opportunity to not experience the joy, the belonging and the continuous improvement. And I think this gives us a greater opportunity as a board, and I hope that my colleagues and I will continue to be vocal about this topic of working conditions. But it also makes us to sit back and review our policies. And look at them with different lenses from different stakeholders. And make sure that we make the changes and recommendations for administration, so that we can retain the top talent that we see across this district in Richland Two. Thank you all so much for all you do. Have a great blessed evening and a great rest of your week, as we celebrate our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Nash.
Okay. I wanna say first, thank you to all, everyone who came out and spoke. You know, when we got on this board, I know for myself and several others, that was something that we hoped. We hoped that staff would come and speak at meetings and talk about the things that were important to them. And just know that you are heard. I think there's definitely a lot of misconceptions around the budget, and I hope people will dig further into, looking into what is actually true and was actually factual, is about the process. I agree with my colleague, Ms. Washington, on that. And so I just wanna now go into, it's Teachers Appreciation Week. And I love AI, and the one I like is called perplexity. And basically, you tell it what you want it to think, like I tell it all the things I want it to say, and it wrote me a poem for teachers. And here we go. Teachers, we appreciate you. Rulers, chocks, chalk and books galore, lessons that make our minds sore, with patience, kindness and a smile, you guide us every mile. From ABCs to chemistry, your dedication we can see. Inspiring us to dream and grow, the seeds of knowledge you sow. Crafting minds with care and art, teachers, you have our heart. This week, we raise our voice to say, thank you for showing us the way. So let's give a cheer, hip hop, hooray, I added the hop, for our amazing teachers today. Your impact's felt both near and far. You're, you're our guiding light and our shining star. Thank you all and have a great night.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter.
Yes, thank you all for coming tonight and, and sharing your voice. And I also wanna say congratulations to all of our turnaround students of the year. I really enjoyed celebrating you at that event, and I know that you've worked hard to get to where you are, and you will continue to work hard. Thank you to our teachers of the year. We celebrated you with the New York theme bash recently, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And the creativity behind it is, does not go unnoticed. So thank you to the staff that made that possible. Also, I wanted to give appreciation for all the creativity within our district to celebrate our teachers for Appreciation Week. I mean, if you look at Twitter and look at the different weeks that all of our different schools have created, you can tell that a lot of thought went into it. Thank you to our parent, our PTOs and the SIC groups that have contributed to that as well. So if you have not shared your appreciation to your child's teacher yet, please do so, cuz people are going far and beyond to make that special, this is special week. Also, thank you to our staff for completing the surveys this year. I felt elated that some of our board priorities were in alignment with what you gave to us in the survey. And it shows that, that we're on the same wavelengths as far as intentions. So continue to complete that survey when you get it each year and know that we will listen to you. And it made me proud to see that our board priorities were in alignment with the results from the surveys. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Elka Scott.
A great meeting tonight. We just have to stick to that 15, 20 minutes for presentations, and that's for everyone. I wanna say to Pastor Chris Levy Johnson, thank you so much. I always say, nothing happens by accident. So it was meant for you to, to share the inspirational moment. People always say, don't be ready, stay ready. So thank you for staying ready. Wanna say thank you to Dr. Juanita Britt McDonald for coming in and giving us the inspirational moment as we celebrate Mental Health Awareness Month. And also want to say Happy Mother's Day, that's coming up soon, not only for the biological moms, for the moms like me, school mom, for the aunties, for the neighbors, all of you guys, thank you and continue to celebrate Happy Mother's Day. And as we celebrate Happy Teacher Appreciation Day, I hope that you guys see that I celebrate you, not just today, not this week, but every month, all year, and that I also celebrate you through my votes, through my advocacy, and through my open door policy of returning phone calls and emails within 24 hours or so. Again, I am a teacher at heart, so you will continue to see me to advocate for your needs, your desires, and even your wants when the budget allows us to do so. So thank you so much and have a great night. Oh, before I do that, Dr. Franklin, thank you so much for filling in. You did a wonderful job. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. And Dr. Franklin, it's your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And our superintendent is here, but I'm gonna continue to sub. Guest superintendent. Global EdTech leader Discovery Education announced Monday the recipients of the inaugural Discovery Education Awards. These awards honor districts, schools and educators who accelerate achievement among students by tapping into their natural curiosity and desire to learn. Discovery Ed has identified three districts of the year, one in Missouri, one in Florida and one in South Carolina. And yes, you guessed it, Richland School District Two is the South Carolina district that was honored. Some Richland, thank you. Some Richland Northeast High School Cavplex Convergence Media students recently won awards in the annual C-SPAN Student CAM Documentary Contest. C-SPAN, C-SPAN breaks up this contest awards geographically into four regions, and we're in the East Region. So one of four second-place regional winners are this pair, Annabelle Jones and Erin Peters, and their project was titled "From Letters to Legislation." One of eight third-place regional winners is Lillian Morossevich, and her project was entitled "First Order Issue: Solving America's Toughest Problem." Congratulations to those students. Testing season is upon us. Parents, as a reminder, we're now in testing season, and we want you to make sure that our children are getting to bed on time, getting to school on time, and eating a quality breakfast, whether that be at home or at school. whether that be at home or at school. This is in order to fuel their brilliant brains. We have less than 30 days left in the 23-24 school year, and we will finish strong. And lastly, last Thursday, we had a beautiful event called Teachers of the Year Live. It was a New York-themed celebration of our Teachers of the Year from each school. In celebration of Teacher Appreciation Week, I express thanks to all of our teachers for their hard work. There's a Japanese proverb that says, "Better than a thousand days of diligent study is one day with a great teacher." So thank you to our teachers for giving your best to our students day after day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things I want to mention, and of course, going last is always a disadvantage because everybody's already said what I want to say. But I would like to, no, no, I'm sorry, I can't share poems on that one public. Anyway, no, I also was able to attend the graduation last week there in Sumter with Ms. Agostini. And I was actually genuinely impressed. I had, I hate to admit it, but I didn't know that we actually had students there at Ridge U High School that were getting an associate's degree from the University of South Carolina at Sumter. So that was, I thought it was just a wonderful thing, and I hope that those kind of programs are something we can expand in the district and give those opportunities. I was talking to a gentleman there that is over the program, works with the program, and we were talking about money and how much that has saved families. Because I have a daughter at USC, and USC is expensive. And together, we figured out we easily could have saved those families between tuition and room and board. You know, the whole 14 students there, around half a million dollars. That's a, that's a big deal to me, and I hope we can do a lot of things like that in the future. And the last thing I'd like to do is just express my gratitude for everybody that's coming, has come out and shared their thoughts with us in public participation and in emails and things like that. We do like to hear from you, and it's important that you share your thoughts with us because it does influence us and it does help us to make good decisions. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Washington.
I move to adjourn the May 7, 2024, regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Can we hand vote? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the vote is unanimous, we are adjourned.